If you'll please rise and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you'd please remain standing just for a brief moment. We received word last day or two about Joe Stackman. He's a longtime member of the Village Volunteer Process. He had actually started as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And then when the Senior Commission was formed, he swung over to the Senior Commission. He has been a forty-year volunteer for the Village. And with that, I'd ask that we bow our heads in a prayer of remembrance. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Special Village Board Meeting, August 2nd, 2016, at 7:00 PM. Roll call, Trustee Maher.
Here.
Trustee Grady.
Here.
Trustee Penito.
Here.
Trustee Vanenver. Trustee Yunker.
Here.
Trustee Suggs.
Here.
Mayor Seaman.
Here. We have a quorum. First item on the agenda, approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number two, minutes of the regular board meeting of July 16th, 2016. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number three, consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Clerk.
Item three, consent agenda. A, consider request for a block party permit on Friday, August 5th, 2016, on 172nd Street, between Oak Park Avenue and 67th Court, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. B, consider request for a block party permit on Saturday, August 13th, from 6840 through 6933, 175th Place, from 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM. C, consider request for block party permit on Saturday, August 13th, from 8304 through 17718, on Lilac Lane, from 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM. D, consider request for a block party permit on Saturday, August 20th, 2016, on the 64th Hundred Block of 181st Street, from Ridgeland to 65th Avenue. E, consider a block party permit on Sunday, September 4th, 2016, at the Barron Court cul-de-sac, from noon to 10:00 PM. F, consider request for People's Animal Welfare Society, PAWS of Tinley Park, to conduct a raffle from September 20th through November 20th, with the winner being drawn on November 20th at the PAWS location. D, consider proclamation recognizing August 15th through August 19th as Municipal Treasurers' Week in the Village of Tinley Park, where as the treasurer will be carried through the town on a chariot chair. And H, payment of outstanding bills in the amount of $9,9,544.50 as listed on the vendor board approval report dated July 22nd and July 29th, 2016.
Anybody on the board care to have any of these items removed or brought for further discussion? Seeing as there are none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Item three, on roll call, Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Yunker.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number four, Trustee Yunker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like the board to consider ordinance number 2016-0-051, granting a variation from the required front yard setback for a fence to Giuliano and Maureen Sepola for a certain property located at 17101 Overhill Avenue and within the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
The variation would allow the petitioners to instruct a five-foot, eight-inch fence, tall wrought iron fence with brick pillars, on a 12-foot, one-inch setback on the north 171st Street side corner, and the pillars on a 12-foot, one-inch setback north of 171st in this corner lot at 17101 Overhill Avenue in the R1 Single Fam District located within Arthur, McIntosh, and Company, Southland subdivision. The variation was in order for the property owners to install the new fence alignment with their neighbor's fence to the east of the petitioner's property. The fence previously existed within alignment with the petitioner's garage at a 23-foot, eight-inch setback, but the fence was recently damaged and removed. The Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on July 14th, 2016, and after consideration of the findings of fact, voted 4-1 in favor of recommending this request of variation.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number five, Trustee Yunker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like the board to consider ordinance 2016-0-052, granting a special use permit to Giuliana Grover of the train station for the purposes of operating a business involving recreational uses and operating between the hours of 5:00 AM and 10:00 PM at 16902 Oak Park Avenue, Unit 3, in the Neighborhood General Zoning District.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
The petitioner, Giuliana Grover of the train station, seeks approval for a special use permit for operation of a business involving recreational uses, including group and personal training, fitness, and nutritional education, and operating between the hours of 5:00 AM and 10:00 PM at 16902 Oak Park Avenue, Unit 3. The Plan Commission had discussed a proposal, special use permit, on July 7th, 2016, and subsequently held the public hearing on July 21st. And after consideration of the standards granting special use and findings of fact, voted 7-0 in favor recommending the special use permit with the following conditions: The train station shall comply with the noise reduction coefficient adjacent tenants of the building or surrounding properties; the class sizes must not exceed three clients per trainer, with a maximum of four trainers allowed at any one time to ensure adequate parking is available; the plot of easement for an alley at the west side of the building must be signed by the property owner by October 1st, 2016, and recorded by the village; and that the two parkway trees installed along Oak Park Avenue frontage by October 1st, 2016. This ordinance is eligible for the first reading.
Is the petitioner here? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item number six, Trustee Suggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to consider adopting ordinance number 2016-0-047, authorizing the disposal of surplus personal property owned by the Village of Tinley Park.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I'd like to just ask the clerk to put all the items into the minutes, but the discussion per state law, an ordinance must be adopted to declare any Village property excess of $1,000 of estimate value and supplier, excuse me, surplus prior to disposing of or sale of any of the materials. And this ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Anybody from the board have any questions?
I'd just ask if perhaps it could be publicized to the people here, so everybody knows it's interested in bidding, where and how to go. I don't know if today's the date to do that or not, but...
I don't know, and I guess I'll defer to Kevin Orkowski who's here, what the method is, because I'm not sure that all these would be brought up in one single event, or how do you usually?
Usually the cars, the trucks, and stuff like that, that's usually one event. It depends on which one we'll go with this year. Sometimes the South Suburban, and then there's also stuff on the Internet, which we do. So we'll look at that once this gets passed and decide which way we're going to go.
Okay.
It'll be advertised.
So people know where to look.
Yeah.
For these cherry 2008 Crown Vix.
It's an improvement from what I'm driving.
Anybody have any other questions from the board? Anybody from the public here to comment? Mr. Clerk.
Item six, final roll call, Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Yunker.
Yes.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number seven, Trustee Suggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to consider adopting ordinance number 2016-0-042, an ordinance designated the Village of Tinley Park Legacy Tax Increment Financing District Redevelopment Project Area.
May we have a second, please? This is one of three companion items, by the way. This TIF legislation has got three legislative components to it, so, just so that everybody knows, so, these are all legally prescribed elements. So, is there a second? Second. Thank you.
This item was postponed at the July 5th, 2016, regular Village Board meeting. On November 3rd, 2015, the Village of Tinley Park authorized moving forward with a feasibility study under the Tax Increment Financing, or TIF, which was determined of the area generally that is bounded by the Railroad and Oak Forest Avenue on the north, 175th Place, 176th and 177th Street, on the South Cook County Forest Preserve. And right now, we are considering removing this item from postponement, and then this ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Just to give you some backdrop here, the, we did a TIF 101 about a week or so ago to try to give everybody a little bit of background about this particular item. And that particular session was chaired by Clerk Ray, who's basically had oversight responsibility for each of the other TIFs in town, as well as our Treasurer, Brad Bentonhausen. So, comments from the clerk?
Well, first of all, if you look at your minutes, you'll see a 7A, a 7B, all those, again, I want to emphasize, are parts of this one motion. We're doing things a little differently this time, and that is, this was moved to postpone, would normally move to table, and the item would then be removed from the table. Our attorney can explain at length why it's being done this way, and I encourage you all to ask him after the meeting.
Mr. Clerk, one, just one point. I have no problem explaining it, but we still need three separate motions, so it's not one motion for all three. So item seven, we're on.
Yeah.
That's all I meant.
Yeah, and we have three.
Just briefly, so, the item was postponed to a date certain at, I think it said July 5th, but maybe it wasn't, I thought it was June. But when an item is postponed, under Robert's rules, to a date certain, you don't need a separate motion to bring it back from the table, so it's properly before you, that's the only point. But we still do need three separate motions.
That 7A, 7B, and...
What, 8, 9?
I have a 7, 8...
9.
And 9. So they are, they're the three companion ordinances. They all need to be passed to create a TIF in this order, but they should all be taken as separate votes.
Well, Mr. Mr., that being the case, Mr. Mayor, do you want the discussion on 7A, which is effectively a procedural step?
Probably just, I think, the backdrop, because the concerns of the public earlier was, I think, having an understanding of the TIF process and what it did. So the legislative components are just more the mechanical machinations to comply with state statute, but the actual, I think, essence of what the questions were about, I think, were attempted to be addressed at that TIF 101 session, so it's really just kind of an overarching...
Let me then hit the high points that were discussed in TIF 101. We see a number of the same good citizens here tonight that were with us last week. A TIF, definitions of Tax Increment Financing District, isn't that redundant? All kinds of discussions can go on, but my contention is a TIF is just one more method that the Village Government can use for financing something. It doesn't raise anybody's taxes, nor does it lower it. It leaves it just exactly where it is, and the taxes either go up or down depending upon the years of that TIF's existence and what's happening inside that TIF. But it's a method of financing, so if someone says, "We're going to TIF it," that means that the TIF may finance it all, or might finance part of it. And just think in terms of yourself, allowing to have a special fund that maybe was created by your grandfather for you, good grandfather, grandfather for you at some time, and you might be paying part of the financing out of that special funding. I say that because it takes on a life of, almost of its own, like it's sometimes a government entity. All the taxing districts in that TIF, all the school boards, the mosquito abatement society, have a voice on the TIF board to decide first if it meets the standards, and second if they recommend to the Village Board to establish it. Those are the primary issues that that board faces. Every year, the TIF must make a report, we've got, if this passes, we'll have five, every TIF must make a report to the Village Government, and provide that same knowledge to the state of Illinois, which goes to the auditor, and she has to control her, and she has a board that sits and reviews those TIFs to see if it meets the state standard. Now, I can really bore down into the detail, but let me say here, what came from that meeting is probably three things. I hope the first was better understanding of what that TIF was, where it is, and how issues are carried out. The second one was, it is being used as a financial instrument, again, my point, my second point, a couple of minutes ago. It's not a separate government, it doesn't take a life of its own, it doesn't affect your taxes. This board might, but it can't. And third, there was a strong concern that came from the TIF residents, that that particular site, that particular TIF, must be a TIF that fits into a solid, beautiful neighborhood, and not an open, grassy field that slopes down and has sort of a natural fauna that looks more like a wheat field. Lots of discussion was had on that, and I might say that I know other, not, I don't know, but I'm assuming other trustees on this government and the mayor will speak to that as well, because we were, over the course of time, we've been advised that this is the new way to put up a TIF, physically now, not the legal structure. It looks like hell. It just, it's not something you want in your neighborhood. So there was a strong point, Mr. Mayor, and board, that this TIF must have an aesthetic side to it that goes beyond what some of them have. Now, Brad is here, but that's the opening comments. It was a good meeting, it went a couple of hours, it was televised, and it'll be played for your convenience between 3:30 and 5:30 every morning for two weeks during the winter, or something like that. That's how I find ours. I can't sleep all night, turn the television on, the worst hours, and there we are. So I'm sure it'll fit into that schedule for you handily. Back to yourself.
Anybody from the rest of the board have any comment? Brian?
Just a brief comment. As I commented at the last board meeting, the reason I abstained from the first vote on this TIF is because the major property holder, Panduit Corporation, is also a client of my law firm for the limited purpose of property tax appeals. They're not a client because I'm a trustee, and they, I've never had any discussions with anyone Panduit about their interest in this TIF district. However, because they're the major property holder, they do stand to benefit either them or their successor from the redevelopment that might occur there, and for that reason, I would abstain from the vote.
Any other comments from the board? This item is on for adoption. Anybody from the public here to comment? Mr. Paus.
Yes, thank you. First couple thank-yous in order. Again, Trustee Suggs for taking my questions, and Brad for answering them, and I want to elaborate on Brad providing a very, very detailed presentation for us and providing the tools that I hope to use to track TIF spending in the future. I'd also like to thank Trustee Maher for actually, you know, acknowledging that, in fact, Panduit is the primary benefit of it, and he is correctly abstaining. Thank you, Trustee Maher. I'm going to reiterate that after that TIF 101, when I think it was a really good session, like Trustee Ray's, I'm sorry, Clerk Ray said, it seems like, while it stresses on the website that the benefit is going to be to everyone, you know, they're going to have the storm sewers, but it seemed like most of the residents don't want the storm sewers, they don't want the sidewalks, they just want to keep it the way it is. So really, the pond being, you know, for the benefit of the main street, you know, the downtown area, and that's going to go through, it's already budgeted, and, you know, it's kind of already going to go through one way or the other, whether this TIF goes through or not. I think it, again, goes back to that Panduit is, in fact, the primary benefit of that. Now, this is going to go through, I understand you guys are going to vote 4-0 with the one abstention, we all know that, but I do want everybody, and basically the people home at Tinley Park, to know that the buildings are going to come down at Panduit. The question is whether we're going to pay for them out of TIF, or is Panduit going to pay for knocking down themselves? And really, what's going to happen, maybe not this year, maybe not next year, maybe three years from now, there will be a check cut to knock those buildings down. And the primary thing, and it may not even come from this TIF district, because I don't really think it's actually going to bring any money, but as Trustee, I'm sorry, Clerk Bentonhausen pointed out, because it's next to other ones, they can get the money out of that, to help pay for it. So the money's going to come from one of the TIFs, they're actually still making money, and this is going to happen. So I just want it on the record that I will be here when that check is cut, and I will present that. Thank you for giving me the tools.
Thank you, Mr. Paus. Anybody else come to comment, please?
I also would like to thank you, Clerk Ray, and Treasurer Bentonhausen, and Trustee Suggs for arranging for the TIF 101, and providing us more clarity, more openness in what's going on. So that was very helpful, so I appreciate that. I don't know if I agree with the previous speaker about people in the neighborhood not wanting storm sewage. I think if your house does not flood, you're ambivalent to that. If your house or basement does flood, you, we do want the storm sewers. And as Clerk Ray pointed out, this can, the TIF can provide some funding for that, but I also encourage that we not wait till the TIF starts generating revenues before beginning the work to get the old historic downtown areas up to a better code and in better shape like the rest of the Village, especially as the rest, we develop downtown and want it to be a destination site for people to come to, you want the neighborhood around it to be walkable and livable, and people not having to wait to downtown, so. So please do consider correcting that issue, you know, quicker rather than later. And then as far as the spending of the TIF funds, provide good TIF 101, TIF 201, those sorts of things, so that we understand that, so that we make sure that we're spending the Village's and the people's money the wisest. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here to comment? Yes, Mr. Everhard.
Trustee Maher, you get note that you're going to abstain from voting because Panduit is a client of yours. When I reviewed the tape from your last comments at the last board meeting, you noted, quote, "That representation goes back many years," unquote. You also made some mention of the term "appearance of impropriety" without really explaining what that means, but what that means is, it's a situation which might raise ethical questions. Lawyers are mandated to avoid even the appearances of impropriety, and I would expect elected officials would do the same because of the fiduciary duties that they owe to residents and taxpayers. With regard to your explanation, Trustee Maher, about abstaining, it didn't appear that it motivated you with regard to abstaining on other ordinances. Ordinance number 2014-0-029 was a recapture agreement that was passed with your yes vote that benefits Panduit, your client. Ordinance number 2008-019 was a sales tax inducement agreement. As of April 30th, 2015, the last financial report that's available on the Village's website that I could find, $249,385 has been refunded to your client, Panduit. You also voted yes on ordinance number 2008-0-023, which was the property tax inducement agreement for Panduit. As of April 30th, 2015, $332,035 has been refunded to Panduit. It's well over a half a million dollars in sales tax and property tax monies refunded to your client based in part on your yes votes. Should also be noted, I think, for the people who are interested, 2008 incentive agreements with Panduit were approved in April of 2008 by a different board. On February 12th, 2008, Panduit made a $2,500 campaign contribution, and Panduit has been a faithful and expected campaign contributor, giving almost $19,000 to Team Tinley candidates since 2008, the time that Panduit was given those incentive agreements. There's many people, or at least there's a few more people now scrutinizing board actions, a lot of those people argue that those facts raise an appearance of impropriety. Should appearances of impropriety be avoided by the board? That's up to you and your fellow Team Tinley members.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else from the public here to comment? Seeing as there are none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
We're voting now on my 7A. Is that right, or in voting?
I just, I just have it as item seven. Is everyone else's agenda?
Seven, 7, 7.
All right, then let me get to that. It is rare, but we actually have two different documents this time because of this method. All right. On seven, roll call, Trustee Maher.
Abstain.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
I vote no, as I have each committee and every time this matter's come up.
Trustee Yunker.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Mayor Seaman.
Yes. Motion carries. Item number eight, Trustee Suggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to consider adoption ordinance, excuse me, my screen's moving here. Ordinance number 2016-0-044, an ordinance adopting tax increment financing. Am I on the wrong one? I'm sorry. It skipped, my screen is skipping, excuse me. Give me one second, I apologize.
Is it not 043?
His computer is skipping number eight.
It's jumping on this.
Oh, oh, I'm void of that, it's technical, I just have it in a paper.
When all else fails.
He's got it.
Excuse me, sorry. I'd like to consider adopting ordinance number 2016-0-043, an ordinance that is approving the Village of Tinley Park's Legacy Tax Increment Financing District Redevelopment Project Area Redevelopment Plan and Project.
May we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
This item was postponed on the July 5th, 2016, regular Village Board meeting, and this is a companion ordinance to the previous two agenda items regarding ordinance number 2016-0-042 and 2016-0... I skipped again. I didn't do that. I can read, no, it's... Yeah, I can't see, it's too small. Thanks for your patience, I'm sorry. Basically, this ordinance would approve the redevelopment plan and the project, and so we would like to consider removing this item from postponement, and then this ordinance is eligible for adoption.
So this gets to the nub, the nitty-gritty, in terms of what elements would be actually improved in that area, that 217-acre area, just for clarification.
That's correct.
Once again, there's a statutory requirement that these be separate elements.
Correct.
Anybody, this item is on for adoption. Anybody from the board here to comment? Anybody from the public here to comment? Let the record reflect that we're none. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call, and final for ordinance 043, Trustee Maher.
Abstain.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
I vote no.
I vote no, as I have each time this matter's come up.
Trustee Yunker.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Mayor Seaman.
Yes. Motion carries. Item number nine, Trustee Suggs.
Let's try this again, Mr. Mayor. Let's consider adopting ordinance number 2016-0-044, an ordinance adopting the tax increment financing for the village of Tinley Park, legacy tax increment financing district.
May we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian.
This item was postponed at the July 5th, 2016, regular village board meeting. And this is a companion ordinance to the previous two agenda items regarding ordinance number 2016-0-042 and 2016-0-043, which the TIF boundaries and approved redevelopment plan. This is considered for removing this item from postponement, and this ordinance is eligible for adoption.
This is the one that just adopts to finance.
Yeah, this, this makes the vehicle available to be able to, to basically handle the financing. Is there anybody from the board that has any questions on this particular item? This item is up for adoption, does anybody from the public here to comment? Let the record reflect that we're none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Final vote on ordinance 044, roll call, Trustee Maher.
Abstain.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Panito.
No.
Wait a minute, you usually have a speech here.
As I have each time before.
Trustee Yunker.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Mayor Seaman.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 10, consider adopting ordinance 2016-0-50, amending Title 11, Chapter 112, Section 112.22 of the Tinley Park Municipal Code, addition of one class EV liquor license. May I have a concurring motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. This is for the Bamboo Garden, this has been an operating restaurant that I think if everybody probably knows at the corner of 167th and Oak Park Avenue. This has been done with commitments of the property owner to make some enhancements to that plaza. It's, it's a little tired. And this way, because of this arrangement, in theory, we're gonna start to see some things improve over there as well. This item is up for adoption, anybody from the board have any questions?
This is a new liquor license.
This is not a new liquor license. They have a liquor license today, this simply gives them the capacity to add video gaming.
How long ago did this liquor license?
No, they've got a liquor license.
Oh, they do, okay. I thought this one was new.
Well, me, you may be right.
Yeah, I think this one might be new. That's why it's on.
Really?
Yeah, I think this is a new license, but.
New license. I don't bring my own, and I've been-
Okay. Well, I mean, let me, you know, to clarify the reason why this one has even moved forward. I've had requests come to me in the past several days requesting gaming. And we've, I've said there's a moratorium on video gaming for dedicated video gaming facilities, which if you recall, council here developed a new license type that would distinguish that from the others. The primary purpose of this is to enhance an already existing business. And that's the distinction between the two, just so the public understands the rationale. Anybody from the board have any other questions? Anybody from the public here to comment? Please step up and-
I do, actually.
I've held back on these on the pass, but I wanna come full out. More gambling, yes. We need more revenue. And it seemed like they were very reputable business owners. So, especially in a case where they already have a liquor license, I encourage you, Mayor Seaman, to grant all of them. We need all the money we can get, and everybody wants to get their spin on, so let's do it.
Thank you, Mr. Paus. Mr. Hiss.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I've got a quick question for you. I fully agree with the whole giving the Bamboo Garden their video gaming license, but you did mention, and I wanted to get some more details on, you put in there a stipulation that they had to improve that complex, can you elaborate on that in any way?
Well, the complex is an older facility, as you know. And so, the, the owner has had to put some monies into that in terms of HVAC improvements to actually retain one of the tenants there. In fact, what I would call the anchor tenant there, which is Ace Hardware. So, that's been an important part. I think there've been some water main breaks and some other things that he's had to make there. So I'm hoping it's the beginning of many more improvements to come. We have several, what I would call, older, more tired strip malls in various parts of the community. And so, when these conversations and requests come through, these, the whole issue of the facility and facade improvements and other enhancements are part of the conversation.
Yeah, as a resident, I greatly appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coglin, long time no see, how are you?
Good to see you. So, so I'm just gonna piggyback on the, on the question, but HVAC and water main breaks, they may, they may help with some vacancies, but is there anything that you're doing that actually, in a formulaic way, actually would encourage people to improve the aesthetics of the outside of their building if they wanted to achieve a video gaming approval? So in other words, have we, have we actually put together a plan that said if you were to put $50,000 to $75,000 into the exterior of your building, therefore improving the, you know, aesthetics of our downtown, then we would be more inclined to actually provide video gaming? Or, or is there anything that we can do along those lines?
Well, that's been stated, it hasn't been articulated in terms of what you could do, which is a development agreement, which you could more specifically mandate it. And I'm getting to that point that that's what I'm beginning to feel is almost a requirement. Because what's happening is, the last several requests that we have are what I regard, and this is not just a downtown issue, all right? We've got tired strip malls on 159th Street, on 167th Street, all far from downtown, that, that require a little bit of freshening and a little bit of investment by the owner. And so, th- this is going to be one of the tools that I'm gonna try to use to encourage that investment, because clearly, if you get a successful tenant in there, you know, depending on your agreement with them in terms of covering CAM and the other, you know, necessities of, of a rental property, in theory, the resources are there to reinvest them in the facility. And so, I'm, I think we're on the same page in terms of getting there. That process hasn't been formalized yet, but I will be working with the planning department to do that.
Okay. And then, obviously, I mean, because I think you've got a, a good vision going forward, couldn't we actually just establish some contingencies in our current approval? So, the approval's contingent upon us actually seeing, because I would agree with you. I would agree wholeheartedly that, that, that intersection is a really tired intersection. And, you know, I, I don't think, I don't think it's for lack of actual investment by the, by the residents. I mean, I know I spend a lot of money in that, in that, in that specific place, right? So, park hardware, you know, you got all these places that, I don't know who the actual landlord is, but-
Leo, he was actually here a couple meetings ago. What I would do is ask if the board concurs, we will put a stipulation that a development, that an improvement plan be submitted to the village prior to release of this, if you think that's sufficient, Council? It's not gonna be very specific, unfortunately, because I don't have the specifics.
The only, I believe the landlord has come in and has been on record, and either the committee, the whole, talked about the improvements, so, you know, I'm okay with that. But getting into specifics without them here, to impose them now, I don't think would be right. But since the landlord has come in and made that commitment in public meetings, I'd be okay with a general, you know, a general stipulation of this license, if you want to-
We can communicate with him to make sure that he understands what our position is on this, which I think we're in the same place.
And the only, the only distinction I would make is, is I wouldn't want the improvements to be ones that, at their core, increase the value of the, of the property for the owner, so HVAC and, and water mains and, and mechanical improvements exclusively. So they could also be ones like fresh coat of paint, landscaping, generally just pride in our community and improvement of the aesthetics, too.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hi, how's it going? I just wanna say that I'm against any further expansion of the gambling. I've got a good friend of mine who's addicted to gambling, I understand everyone has their own vices that they have to control, but a further, further expansion of the gambling within Tinley Park just means that for limits places I can go with my friend. As of right now, the only bar I know that I can go to in Tinley Park that doesn't have video gambling is Tribes. And that, just with the further expansion of it, that limits places in Tinley Park that I can spend my own money at. And I'll probably have to go to some places out in Olin Park that don't have gambling, so that way he's not tempted. But, that's all.
Understood. Thank you. Mr. Glottz.
Mr. Mayor, as far as the planning when we help a business out, like, you're speaking about like painting and stuff like that?
Well, we hope, I think it depends.
Before you guys move forward with helping someone, do you guys make them submit tax returns so you could see that the comp, that the, the business owners or the landowners are actually losing money? So it's, instead of someone that makes a half a million dollars for the year, and then we just paid for their landscaping and we painted their buildings and gave them a new roof?
But we're not, none of the conversations here-
Like you, you said earlier in the conversation with Matt, you guys talked about helping people and stuff, like tired businesses?
Well, by giving a gambling license, you in essence help that business. And in this case, the, because I think it's kind of a joint venture between the owner and the business owner to do some improvements to the plaza.
I understand, but as far as the joint giving our taxpayer dollars-
We're not giving anything away on this one.
You're not?
No. We're giving a right, a license essentially, that's all we're giving.
But if you would help a tired business, you guys wouldn't, weren't you speaking about helping out?
No. Not, not with any taxpayer dollars, no, sir.
Okay. And we haven't had any programs like that before in Olin Park?
There are facade programs, yes.
Okay. When we do that, do we have them submit tax returns?
There are business-
Yes, let me suggest that on Oak Park Avenue, it's, it is itself a special taxing district established 25 years ago to assist current businesses on Oak Park to stay on Oak Park. And if you have a few minutes, not after this, but during one of the weekdays, come on by and we'll show you, we'll show you exactly the process and give you a couple of examples.
Okay.
But it's usually facade, by the way.
I just wanna make sure if we're helping someone, they're in need of the help, instead of just doing-
I don't believe we ask them to be spinning into bankruptcy.
Okay.
We wanna see, you know, the-
For example, Mr. Mack, I know he was back and forth a lot of times for 183rd. I think the facade, it was, they came, they came to-
Well, he had construction delays, that was his problem.
Okay, thanks.
On that one. Thank you, Mr. Glottz. Yes, sir?
Good evening, how you doing?
Good.
I'm somewhat concerned, is there a limitation, or will there be a limitation on the number of licenses for gambling that the village will issue? And if not, perhaps the village ought to consider that. I think we have a proliferation of gaming licenses throughout the village and maybe way too many. I know there's income from it, but on the other hand, do we really need all that gambling? Almost everywhere you go, you got video gaming. In fact, I was really surprised when the car wash up there on 171st-
Yes.
Requested a liquor license and a gaming license. I mean, how crazier can we get? Fortunately, the village board did not see the reason for that, and they denied it. But, again, my question is, do we have a limitation on?
There, there are limitations in place right now. For instance, I cannot unilaterally just grant the license, because we've kept them fairly close to the, so that every time somebody comes up before this board for a, a video gaming license, which is of course tied to the liquor license, they have to explain and make their case. So it's really not a single person that's making that decision. It's this village board that's basically reviewing the legitimacy of the request.
I understand that, but don't you think there should be a limitation, a number, fixed number of licenses allowed for the village and leave it at that?
I think that's a, for instance, and I'll give you one example, there's a, let's just say we did that. And let's just say we did it today. So if a new business came before us that was taking an empty space of 8,000 square feet, as an example, and basically was going to put a restaurant facility in there, but wanted to have a part of that dedicated to video gaming, I think this board would have to consider that seriously. I don't think an arbitrary limit or ceiling would in essence solve or be helpful to the occupancy issues of vacancies. And there's just such an example of that on LaGrange Road at us 179th, which I think would be a legitimate case to be made to do it, depending upon the type of restaurant, depending on the quality and caliber of it. I think it, it has to be made on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, well, I asked this question, do you really? The question I, I really like to have answered is, do you really see the need to have all these video gaming facilities in the village?
You, right now, you've got about 20, I think, 20?
21 establishments.
21.
And how many on Oak Park? We got Bailey's for one. Does Cousins have one?
Yes.
And as you go further?
You probably have, you probably have- 75, no, they're not all on the east side. You've probably got about 75% of them that are east of Harlem.
Well, anyway, something to think about.
Thank you. No, it's something worth thinking about. Yes, ma'am?
Um, as you know, I don't want the east side saturated. Start putting some on the west side, that'd be fine with me. But, when you do, um-
I have requests for that, too, but I'm-
I know, I know.
We're trying to be careful.
If you could kinda put that, also put into there, the signage, the tacky signage. Now Cousins has two signs out there, Vegas Slots, or Slots, or some stupid thing, it just looks tacky. And I, and I hate saying that word, and I, you guys have to be sick of me saying it. So if we could, you know, get that-
The, the planning department is working on that.
Are they?
Yes.
When? Oh, I will keep saying it back. So, if we could look at it. Okay?
Thank you.
Point of order, you've already spoken on this issue.
Oh, okay, so should I wait till public?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Laura, he gets the clap.
So, yeah, the video gaming, are we branding ourselves already with video gaming? I mean, I'm, I hesitate to add any more gaming, video gamings, even though I'm anti them, at last count, when I looked, we had 155 machines. That's at-
That's not accurate.
How many do we have, then?
There are 98 machines as of the last reporting.
Okay, so, but then anytime I've gone to these places, what's wrong with a restaurant being known? If it's a Mexican restaurant, they have tacos, why do they have to? Can't they be good at their tacos, where they have, they don't have to have their video gaming machines? Like, I get it, but if you're a restaurant, be known for being the restaurant. You know, I think they're doing themselves a disservice, I think they're saturating their own restaurants. I don't like to go to these restaurants and see them, and it's my preference, but I probably won't go to some of these restaurants because they're there, they're tack, they're tacky. And the more you put in, the more you saturate the community with them, and you're not gonna do any of the businesses looking to get some type of tax relief from them. You got, there's too many, in my opinion, yes, in my opinion. I need, you need to stop, or even put a ratio, a percentage, is here's X amount of businesses, if we open 15 businesses, 1% of them can have video gaming. There should be some type of ratio formula that there should be a limit to these video gamings. It shouldn't be every business, and I know you said there'll be special consideration, but there's too many, there's, there's too many, there's too many. In my opinion. Very humble.
Believe me, I appreciate that, because I, there are a lot of us that have opinions about gambling generally. And unfortunately, some of our people in Springfield made other decisions, so that's a-
Okay, as a town, as a township, I ask that you be incredibly prudent and cease until some type of formula is even, or just some type of number that the ratio to gaming machines to our businesses are somebody equal, because you're doing a disservice. I mean, when you see five machines in one restaurant, and four in another, and they're all empty, but you put one on the next block, I mean, do people jump from location to location to use them? No, somebody's gonna lose out on the business because they have too many there. I think there's too many, I haven't seen, I've seen one utilized at the one bar I went to. And then another time, there were four machines completely empty, another time, completely empty. And then the other time was the employee, with the employee telling, the other employees tell them, "Get away from the machine, leave it." I mean, it's a shame. So I think we need to look at the moral aspect. People can spend their money anywhere they want, but the machines are there. They can spend their money, I'm not telling them how to spend their money. I'm just saying, you're gonna do this town a disservice if you keep enabling them. Enabling is the word I wanna use.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
On an annual basis, how much money is the village taking in on these video gaming machines? An estimate?
Gaming revenue is about, I believe, about $250,000 with the licensing in addition to that, which would be about 110- to that, which would be about 100, about 100 grand.
So about $300,000, I think is the true opinion.
But I think, I agree with the previous speaker, the fact that, I think that they kind of degrade the reputation and the branding. You know, there was just recently a, a meeting on branding in the village.
Correct.
And making it a destination. And the more video gambling, I think the less families and the crowds that you really want to draw will come. And for $300,000, I mean, it, you know, that's, that seems very minor in comparison to the total village budget that you would kind of sell the village as sold for 300,000, I thought our price tag should be higher than that.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else here to comment on this item?
I, I have a question.
Please.
And I probably asked this before, Patrick, are these licenses transferable?
Transferable, how?
Huh?
The liquor licenses?
Yeah, I mean, the liquor with the game.
I, I think, I think there is an exception for maybe if, you know, in the family, you know, the father dies, maybe down to the son, but transferable from, you know, XYZ Corp to, you know, another corp with different partners and shareholders, no they are not. I mean, there are some exceptions for kind of, if you change entities, things like that, but as long as the ownership, when the ownership changes, they're not transferable.
Liquor licenses are to the individual, so it's.
Correct.
They're separately screened, they're separately vetted by not only the village, the Illinois Liquor Commission as well. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Final, an ordinance 050. Roll call, Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Panito.
No, and I just want to comment, I believe not that long ago, we granted these folks their liquor license, which was fine. I, I don't want to be granting any more liquor gaming licenses until we have some systematic way to look at who gets these licenses, under what conditions and how many. And I know we did kind of start getting a handle on that recently when we divided them into two types, but here's another one right back that wasn't there before and now it is.
Trustee Yunker.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. You know, once again, this is a viable, ongoing business and that was the reason why it's up for, you know, consideration. I think if, and as I'd mentioned before, when anybody has come asking about these liquor licenses for strictly video gaming hall facilities, I've stated there's a moratorium. I think there are three or four in the pipeline and until those go in and until we get to see how those function, that, that's going to be it. And we've got some signing issues as well.
And remember that the legislation this board passed, you, you created a separate new classification for the video gaming halls, which are capped, and, you know, the only, you'd have to increase the number through a vote of the board. So you did, this board did address that. I mean, they are, they are capped with a option to vote for another one as any other liquor license. That's all.
Very good. At this point, I'd like, before we move to executive session, see if there are any comments from the board. I'd like to make one quick one. This got to what was raised earlier by some people, the branding questionnaire is on the website, so get in there and, you know, feel free to, to get out there and to, to make your opinions. It'll be open till August 19th, so let's try to take advantage of that opportunity to see how people feel branding should be, should evolve and should, that, that process should be finalized. Anybody from the board have any comment? We had a great national night out, Trustee Grady, Trustee Suggs were out there, we had a lot of people out there in conjunction with the cruise night. So I think a good chance once again for families, we had Deputy Chief Mason out there doing introductions with Deanna Nevis, our crime prevention officer, and I think it was a very successful evening, the, the fire department was out, Public Works, a nice show of, of the village's capabilities that, this evening. And a nice show of support, I think, for the police department. If no other comments from the board, public, anybody from the public here to comment?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Michael.
Thank you again. I just want to address something that goes along with your video gaming licensing that you had mentioned before. I was trying to find the meeting minutes from it, but there is a cap on gaming licenses in our area based off of geographic proximity to other gaming facilities, so.
Yes.
For those who are worried that we're going to oversaturate, they've already addressed that with a different ordinance, I believe it was two months ago.
Correct. Thank you, Michael. Mr. Paws.
I'm going to try and wing through my, my four minutes on a quick amount of topics here. The topic was brought up by Wilma with myself earlier about Cellar's Pond as an example for the legacy district pond. On my runs down Sayre Avenue, I, I do remember seeing Settlers Pond, and I do recall there being a boating ban on it. Now, you can't defer to the, you can't blame this one on the Park District, that's under your guys' jurisdiction, I believe.
Yes, I believe it is.
Why do you ban boating on it? Why, why are you persecuting my kayaking?
I'll defer to people that know something about it, but we'll, we'll save these questions for you later because I want you to get your full four minutes in.
Okay, yeah, all right, so I just wanted to throw that out there, that I would acknowledge it, it does have a no boating sign on it, so hopefully that would not be extended to if and when we get the waters at the eight acre pond. I'm going to segue into another thing, a concern of mine, there was an unfortunate incident at the 191st and Harlem Avenue shopping complex on Friday, I believe. I was wondering, what is it going to take to get cameras at least installed at the two streetlights that enter the facility and possibly one at 191st and Harlem itself? And I don't know if it's a jurisdictional issue, but I would like it if it was possible to have cameras put on the entrance ramps, you know, to I-80 as it provides a convenient escape route for anyone perpetrating a crime there.
I, I mean, I'll, I'll give you the best answer, that's been budgeted to have some camera enhancements made, there was a, a strong feeling on this board's part that, that technology is critical to managing some of the crimes and to actually act as a deterrent, in my opinion, to crime.
Yeah, I, I think sadly, this being, if I recall, two incidents this summer, then of course the terrible Lane Bryant, three major incidents, you know, I'm getting the feeling that people don't think, or they, I'm afraid people are getting the idea they can get away with crime, so I would, anything that we can do to deter it would be in the interest of the village. So I'm just going to throw that out there as a concerned citizen.
It was 191st and 80th Avenue where the issue is, and the, the, the origin of the, the identification of the crime was actually at Sam's Club at 156th and Harlem, so it actually.
Oh, so it did not originate there, okay.
It was not at Brookside Glen.
Ah, okay, well, that's.
Market Place, rather.
All right, oh, thank you for clarifying that, sorry about that. Last thing I'm going to, I, I never thought I'd be in the position where I was defending you, Mayor, but keep on keeping on with the, with the liquor licenses, I mean, sorry, the gaming licenses. Gaming people just stay off to their side, they just want to get their drink on and they get their spin on, and it gives us money, maybe not a lot, all you, you know, gaming haters behind me, but, you know, I, I don't see any real harm in it. I'm a live and let live kind of guy, I'm a liberal, I, I, again, I've been silent on this, but seeing as certain people have tried to silence me in certain parts of the town, I'm going to start speaking up on things that I've held back on in the past, and that was one of them, so keep up the good work, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Yes?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I actually got a question to expand upon an earlier comment that you made during the talk about the video gambling. You, you made a comment something like, most want to mention the majority of the gambling happens to be in the east side of Tinley and you're trying to expand it possibly to parts of the west side?
I am, believe me, I am not trying to put a quote out there.
I'm not trying to put, I'm just, I just got questions that, if you were to expand it to the west side, where would you even expand it to? Because, I mean, to my knowledge, the only place that, the only bar in west side of Tinley that does not have, well, that's even inside of west Tinley that, that doesn't have video gambling is just Tribes. I'm pretty sure that the Cottage, I think, has some, I don't fault me on that.
They do.
But where else would you expand it to then if the only place that doesn't have it is, is Tribes?
The Pizza Place over by the rain.
Would be, uh, the Jets?
Like, do you know?
Okay, I think what it is, is there, as I suggested to you, if, if there is a reasonable package that's presented, and I mean one where you've got a substantial, let's say, restaurant business, that's their primary source of revenues.
Okay.
That, to me, falls under different consideration than somebody that's going to be doing the video gaming as, because that is a separate license.
Okay.
So, and that's why this visibility should be clear to not only this board, but also to the public as well before those kinds of considerations occur.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, you know, just one general comment and observation.
Sure.
You know, you had mentioned that the video gaming, you know, philosophy was that we'll address them on an ad hoc basis, one by one?
Well, there's a, there's a philosophical, and I've shared this with the board already, there are certain parameters that are in place on video gaming today. For instance, you, I won't give a liquor license to somebody with less than 2,000 square feet, that's a, that's a carry-on position.
I, I'm, I'm even being a little bit more comprehensive in, in terms of, you know, long-term objectives around the viability of their, of our downtown and, and things like that. So, you know, one thing I would just say is, if there were a three-year plan or a five-year plan, we, we could articulate that, you know, where we're going to allow video gaming would be centralized in, you know, in three or four square blocks and we could create some compelling incentives for people to start to populate vacant businesses in our downtown and, and not have it in car washes and places that you wouldn't expect to see it all over town. And, and so I guess what I'm just kind of speaking to is, when something like this comes up, do we ever take a step back and say, what is the village's comprehensive strategy for video gaming, or do we treat each and everything like it's Groundhog Day?
No, there is a comprehensive strategy, and that, as I said, has been articulated. Unrelated uses is one of those things that I presently put the hold on because I'm not convinced that, for instance, having gambling machines in laundromats or in car washes is something I'm terribly comfortable with.
So when, when we had the comprehen, when we had a strategy, what was the outcome the city wanted to achieve by giving out these video gaming licenses? Was there a area of the city where we wanted them concentrated? Was there, was there an area where we wanted more economic development such that people would actually be incented to open up places or to build new businesses in order to get them? Or what was, maybe just describe for a moment, what, what was our comprehensive strategy?
Comprehensive strategy is to see business flourish in Tinley Park, that's our comprehensive strategy. How and what tools you use to do it is going to vary based on the kind of business, a brew pub's going to have a different standard than, say, a full-service restaurant, so I, I wish I could tell you, you know, a specific thing, but I think to, to large degree, this is driven by the market. Market determines what businesses go into place. Government can give parameters, but market gets too prescriptive, you're, you're going to choke a market, and I don't know that that's what we want to do.
Okay, I, I would just say that there's lots of examples, Rosemont being one, where, where the combination of government and, and private industry working together can concentrate. Certainly would be easier for law enforcement and different people if we concentrated these, concentrated these types of venues and had them in, in certain areas of the city where we could actually say that's what we know is going on in the area and it wasn't happening everywhere throughout the entire city, so.
Thank you, Mr. Coughlin. Yes, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Wrong bald white guy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, he's my buddy. November 13th, you guys released the strategic, and this kind of goes along with Coughlin, Economic Development Strate, Strategic Plan with the ECC, and it was the priorities, priorities were through 2013 through 2015. Is there an updated plan that's out? And that's directed to Trustee Maher?
I'm sorry, an update to the strategic plan?
Yeah.
Where, I guess I'd ask the village manager where we're at with the implementation aspect of it.
Well, we're, we're close to finalizing the, the overall village strategic plan, in fact, we're due to present it very shortly in public. I think you were asking about the economic development strategic plan, though?
Right, that is correct.
Yeah, that plan has, has not been updated, but there's a specific village strategic plan that the board's been working on and that we received resident input through surveys and focus groups last fall.
Right, so, that's great, I mean.
I thought I'd misunderstood.
No, that's fine. Part of that is, you know, they have responsibilities and directed who's responsible, the board, the commission, the planning department, and so just they said ongoing, so obviously people are going to keep going. But is there any accountability on who's making sure you're following through with the plans? And actually trying to obtain the goals or meeting the goals? I just, I'm trying to set up accountability on what's going on and who's trying to bring in business to it. I mean, you can't, the market dictates it, but we can create the market for the downtown is what I'm pushing, and House Center. I was just wondering who's, and I taught, I brought this up at a planning commission meeting, who's out there proactively trying to get business in to Tinley, industry in? That's what I'm just wondering.
Well, our, our economic development director would have been the key person.
Right.
Not with us, but we now have economic development consultants who are, they have a whole, they probably have a, a list that was left of 80 or so possible prospects that have been in touch with the village in various types of industries and so forth. In each case, there have been, in many cases, there have been discussions about potential incentives and what's needed to make developments happen and that type of thing. There's regular updates of economic development reports to the entire board, they used to go to the Economic Development Trustee, I asked that they go to the entire board because the entire board was interested in seeing those.
Makes sense.
Beyond that, I mean, other than follow-up on each of the prospects and, and reaching out and being involved in the economic development community, we're pretty active in, in terms of other communities that are active in those societies and groups such as Cornet Global, for example. I mean, we, we do follow-up and there is a, not a specific plan as to what business we're trying to place in what spot outside of our general comprehensive plan and zoning plan, but.
I think you'd be more than, we'd be more than happy to entertain some of those questions if you want to follow-up with us and we'll get them for you, because there are actually three plans that we have up to, including a financial policy that speaks, speaks to incentives, which is part of it as well.
Right, and I believe, I think the ECC asks for all the incentives and what's available for each district.
Right, they're currently, ECC is currently reviewing our incentive policies that have been developed over the course of years.
Right.
And basically trying to make sure that they're consistent with what we're looking to do and that they're, more importantly, that we, we make them a little bit more user-friendly for the end user, because if you get into our economic development incentive policies, it, it can be a little confusing, it's because if you're in Will County, it's one thing, if you're in Cookett, it's another. There are different reasons for it and there are different potential opportunities, but.
If you'd like to follow-up, please do so. Mr.?
DeNeuer. But that's, DeNeuer.
DeNeuer, okay, thank you.
Can I just say one more thing?
Quickly.
Just the communication, communication is important and part of that on the, for the ECC is to develop commercial properties downtown, and then our planning department was putting tax amendments to take commercial out. I mean, so, I was talking to him, hey, I know there, I know there's.
We'll get it, we'll, we got you, but please follow-up with us. In fact, I'm in the office Saturday, you're more than welcome to come by and I'd love to chat more with you about it.
Okay, all right.
Yes, Mr. Doyle?
I was curious, as to the specific reasons why the salary schedules are reserved for the executive closed session?
I, it isn't a salary scale issue, it's union negotiation, so that's, that's executive session.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I saw the.
It's a broader, it's a, I mean, I'll defer to councils to how that works.
That's the, that's the language from the Open Meetings Act itself, that's the whole exception.
Okay, salary schedules are exempted from?
They are, as that language says, that's.
Okay, okay. Also too, Trustee Panito, since you're the only one who voted no on the TIF, would you like to expand on the reasons why, perhaps, you know, you can enlighten us, maybe we're missing something? I mean, you, you started to talk about why you voted no against the video gaming for Bamboo Garn. I think a lot of people here are curious as to why you voted no on the. as to why you voted no on the TIF.
Yeah, just remember, you're into the four minutes. If you want him to answer now, are you exceeding?
I'm curious about my four minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Very good.
Well, you asked me two questions. So the video gaming, my recollection was it was the mayor's job is the liquor commissioner to decide who gets a license or not. At one point in time, we kind of said we'd like to be part of that, at least have some controls. So it's just not willy-nilly, anybody who could come in could get a liquor license and gaming. And about two months ago, we did something to address that. And our attorney brought some policies forth that separated liquor licenses from gaming licenses and put caps on the gaming licenses. And here, a business that recently got a liquor license is now getting a gaming license. It just kind of threw me for a loop. And I would like to have controls. I'd like to have reasons and a system for, if we're doing it for economic development, let's have a plan so that everybody could share equally. And there's a, you know, anybody that wants it could throw their name into a hat and they could decide among the most.
Yeah, I got that. I don't mean to cut you off, but I think we're really much about the TIF.
Moving on to TIF districts, it's a complicated issue. Basically, my reading of TIFs are incremental financing. And when you talk about incremental financing, the financing comes from taxes on any new business that develops. So they come up with a number, anything, any growth after that gets taxed. And the money from that new growth, rather than going to schools and park districts and libraries and fire protection and all the rest, goes into a special fund that's used for development in those specific parameters. Someone has control over that, how it's spent, whether it goes to Panduit Corporation, whether it goes to Hanson Development Corporation, whether it goes, wherever it goes. And it doesn't go by formula to the different taxing bodies as it would otherwise. My thoughts generally on TIF districts are, there's going to be growth. Whether you have a district, TIF district or not, there's going to be growth. If there was growth without the TIF district, the money would go into the general fund and it paid for fire, police, schools, everything else. If there's growth and there's a TIF district, the money goes wherever the people who decide, decide that it goes. And I just can't say, and I just can't control it. And that's kind of bothersome to me. My other problems are the stated purposes of this thing. My understanding is that one of the buildings is going to be a 280 development, 280 acre development at the Panduit site, which, it's my opinion that Panduit might have started five, six years ago and been well underway with now without any government help. The other development is something that's out, that the Hanson thing, that South Street project. My thoughts on that, and maybe it's going to be a great thing and maybe the plan's great, maybe I'm wrong, but I think if the government didn't get their hands in there and start buying property and doing TIFs and stuff like that, that stuff would be developed already. It wouldn't necessarily be four-story buildings with 280 units in it, but I don't think that's necessarily what downtown needs. I see crowding. I just don't think that would be as good as cool businesses that draw people into town. And they could be two stories so that people get their tax break by having a, you know, residence on top of the building. My thoughts are, this plan was here years ago. Before I got here, I think it needs to be rethought, reworked, and I think it could be better. That's why I've been voting no all the way along, from the committee meetings to the general, you know, all the way along. Thanks for asking.
Mr. Black?
For Mr. Doyle, the, you're asking about the salaries for the union. Every July, it's updated, the new rates. You can go on the State of Illinois website and you could pull, you could pull all the hourlies and Bennys up if you want to see the State of Illinois.
The, I'm going to ask you, Mayor Seaman, about the, we're looking for a police chief, I'm sorry, a fire chief. And we're looking for possibly a planning director, an economic-
Community development director.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Is it possible, you guys ever discussed maybe making it easier so you can get a bigger pool of people? Maybe instead of a one-year, make it a two-year appointment? And if you're, I mean, you guys do assessments on them anyways, and they're at-will employees, you can get rid of them anyways. I'm just wondering if maybe that would get more people that would be interested. I look at it myself. If I'm going to move from Northbrook down to here and I only have one year, you know, you may be losing some good people that would want to put a resume on your desk. I don't know if you guys, what you think of that, but-
I think people that are in government service generally understand that as an occupational risk. They understand the political nature of especially higher-level positions within a board and within a village, that there are changes in boards. And sometimes those changes in boards evoke changes in staff. You know, that's something that has been a consideration. There are some staff that have recommended we alleviate the residency requirement because that's a, that's a limiting factor as well in terms of people that can come in or will consider. And that's an area that this board has been very reticent to consider.
Because they know some other towns do that, where they have it two years or sometimes even more. With them being an at-will employee, I don't see how it would hurt. It would just give you, it would just, instead of you looking at 50 people that send in a resume, maybe you'll get 80 people.
We do very well with the resumes that have come in thus far, but ultimately, the proof is in the candidates that you're looking at and the quality in Calvera. But I appreciate your comments.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Yes?
Ladies and gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
A question for Mayor Seaman?
Yes, sir.
I'm just wondering, if you're selected to serve on an important commission such as the Economic Commission as a volunteer, what percentage of meetings are you expected to attend, to remain in good standing, and to be of value as an engaged contributor? I understand it's a part-time unpaid volunteer position and no one can be expected to attend all meetings. But shouldn't there be an upfront, agreed-upon time commitment expected before even being appointed to the position? Or if not, another volunteer could then be selected that will be willing to commit? I'm also assuming that the position was not intended to be used as a stepping stone or a resume builder for a loftier future political ambitions? But I'm just wondering what, I mean, what's expected if you're going to take on a volunteer position and be appointed? Roughly, what percentage of meetings can, you know, should you be willing to commit to?
Depending on somebody's job assignments, which change with some frequency. These are volunteers. People can be assigned out of town, just as I have in my earlier positions or in the military. And you can't always be there at every time, but being engaged in a commission process isn't necessarily limited to being engaged in the meetings.
I mean, just roughly, just, you know, just, you know, a figure of, you have to commit minimally, you know?
The chair, I ask each chair prior to appointment whether he thinks or she thinks the participation is sufficient. That's who I go to as my source of information.
So you're not willing to just say, you know, like 75%?
I mean, I think it depends on the kind of commission, too. For instance, you know, your commission goes into Haynes and Summers, your veterans' commission. So does that mean that, you know, they should be held to another standard? I think it just depends.
How about just making like half the meetings?
It depends.
Is that reasonable? Or at least commit to making half the meetings?
I think it depends.
If you follow below that, I mean, isn't it the point where you should just, you know, say, you know what, I have to step aside, let somebody else do this. I really can't commit the time to do this.
I think what has happened in the past is when people are unable to attend, we usually move them in and out of associate positions. And sometimes we move them back into full-commission positions, once again, depending on their job burden.
All right. Let me ask you this, then. Did Mr. Suggs' overall attendance record of just 15 out of 39 meetings, 39% over five years on the Economic Commercial Commission factor into your decision to consider him the best candidate for appointment to fill the open trustee position?
I look at commitment and competence.
All right. Just to break it down, 2011, 101, 2012, three of eight, 2013, three of seven, 2014, three of nine, 115 to 416, five meetings, made five meetings out of 13 meetings, for a total of 38 meetings and a 39% attendance ratio over his time at the commission. The attendance record I'm quoting from is the Tinley Park ECC minutes agendas found on the village website.
If you'd like to have this conversation further, you're more than welcome to join Kevin and I later, either Saturday when I'm in the office or some other time. And we'd be more than happy to go into the details with you.
I just, I just got one more thing.
Because you're at the end of your time, sir.
I just got one more thing.
Thank, well.
You going to cut me off?
Yes, because you're at your four minutes. And that's the rules that we've adopted here. So if you'd like to chat afterwards, you're more than welcome. Or come by Saturday. I'm here Saturday morning, nine to noon. Come on in. Any other comments? Seeing as there are none, motion to adjourn to executive session is in order to do the following. A, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. B, litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the findings shall be recorded, entered into the minutes of the closed meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Motion on roll call.
Who moved?
So moved.
I'll second.
Second.
Roll call on a motion to adjourn to executive session. Mr. Mayor, would you grant the rule?
All right. If you'd like to conduct conversations outside, we just have to finish off this meeting. And then you can, do you think it'd be quiet or you can do it later? Thank you.
Okay. Roll call, trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Younger.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. We expect nothing to be announced at the end of this meeting. So have a good evening. Thank you.